Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the planning board meeting to order on August 3 at 6:01 PM. I am Chair of the Board, Stephanie Slish. I have Jimmy Tarr, alternate chair to my right, and Bob Wagner to my left, and our newest member, second meeting, Lee Bell at the end, and our administrative assistant Gerard Bueno also here as well. I see we have a few folks here virtually and a few folks in the audience. So this first part of the agenda is public forum. So this is for anyone here who's here virtually or in person to talk, bring something to attention to the board that is not on the agenda currently. So this is an opportunity for folks to raise an issue, let their opinion be heard, bring something to our attention that's not on the agenda. So I'll give a second for any virtual folks here. Is there anyone virtually that would like to talk at public forum? I was told there might be someone calling in from out of state. So I was just gonna give a minute.
I'm here.
Oh, hi. Could you introduce your, state your name and location for the record, please?
My name is Michael Karpinski, and I am speaking on behalf of Grace Karpinski from 52 North Street. I'm calling from the mountains of Oregon.
Well, hello. How can we help you today? What would you like to bring before the board today?
My request is, the short story is that my grandmother and father and my parents bought two lots in 1956 on North Street in Hatfield. And the, my parents built a house, my grandparents were going to build a house on the lot next door. And the zoning requirements for frontage changed in about the mid-'70s, and they never got that opportunity. And now we have a lot next to my mother's house, and my mother is living there now, that we would like to add onto my mother's lot. In other words, making two tax lots into one large tax lot. And we would like to do that as, whatever, as painlessly as possible. And that is, that is my request to the planning board.
Yeah, so I'm pretty sure that's something that you'd have to probably get a surveyor to bring before the board, and we would vote on that, and then you'd have to give that to the...
They have to get recorded.
Recorded, yeah, yeah. So that, unfortunately, that would be, you know, you have to go through that process of getting a surveyor to draw the map of what the parcel would then, going from two to parcels to one larger parcel, would look like.
Okay, so the, the process would be that we would get it, we would get it surveyed by a licensed surveyor in Massachusetts, and then we would bring it to, back to the planning board, and they would, they would approve that. Now, what, what guarantee do I have, because surveys are expensive, that, that the planning board would then approve it? Is there a, is there a preapproval process that we could go through to make sure that I wasn't just exercising my, my checkbook, or my mother's checkbook?
So actually, this is getting into something more than just a public forum. This would be, you could have that informal conversation with us, but that would have to appear on the agenda, just in case a neighbor or somebody wanted to be here to participate in that informal conversation. And then you would probably want to, you would probably want to do that ahead of hiring the surveyor, but since you're just making a, you know, basically turning what are two smaller lots into one bigger lot...
Which would be bringing it into compliance of the 200 feet frontage.
Isn't this similar to what we did up on Prospect Street already with the guy's lot who died?
Kind of, yeah.
It is, but again, this is beyond the realm of public forum.
Right, right, oh, right. I'm just saying, we have done this before.
This is generally something that goes through easily.
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's, it's a, it's a process that, that has been done before, and we just need to get on, get on that track, and, and then, and then get on the agenda with a survey done, and then, and then, and then, so, right, get on the agenda so that anybody who might have a comment on it, neighbors, et cetera, would have that opportunity.
Correct, yeah. And that would be working with Gerard to, I think you've been in contact with, to get onto the agenda. We have meetings the first Wednesday of the month, so...
Okay, great, great. Well, I will, I will, I will pursue that, that path, and be in, you know, be in touch with Gerard and get back on the agenda, and we'll move forward. So I think, I think I have all of my, all of my questions answered, and thank you for your time.
Nice, nice to hear from you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All righty. Hi.
Anyone else here for public forum? If not, being closed public forum, move into our informal discussion. So first informal discussion we have is with Jeremy Cotton on a potential special permit amendment to the wood processing business at 12 Elm Street. Yep, yeah, if you mind sitting in the front here, next to the light.
Actually, Mr. Cotton's on his way in.
Okay.
If you wanted to do...
Move to a...
The next item, and then call us when Jeremy's here.
Sure.
Sure.
I don't think, is the fire chief here?
Oh, no, this is just a...
Oh, yes, informal, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
I think so.
We are waiting, I don't know if everyone heard that virtually, but we are gonna move to the other informal discussion item as we wait for Jeremy Cotton, who's on his way here. This, the informal discussion on the potential fire training facility on West Street, I just wanted to, I know there's been at least one call to a board member about this that, and I just wanted to state it mostly for the public record, and then also for the board to just be thinking about that. Nothing's been officially proposed yet. It would be something that would come before the planning board, though, because it would be through the Hatfield Firefighters Association, which is...
Do they have a spot yet?
It's been, it's been discussed at the select board meetings and at, it's been in the Gazette, actually, an article about the Gazette, but it would be off behind West Street. It has no frontage, so I, I would just wanted to put on the record that, you know, in case there are people and folks in the public that are interested in commenting on this, first, we don't have, there isn't anything proposed yet. It would come through us and go through the process with us, so there would be an opportunity to have everyone's voices heard at that time, but then mostly just for board members to, to know that that's probably coming down the pike, and to look out on that. So I just wanted to, hopefully, just mention that, and then hopefully that also helps any concerned or opinionated residents know that there will be a process for all of this, too. So, any comments on that?
Nope.
Cool.
She needs to talk about.
Yeah, if you want to, if we're still waiting for...
Oh, here's Bob now.
As we just went through that. We just went through, on the agenda item that we just talked about, for the fire training facility, it was, just, I'll just reiterate since fire chief just walked in for virtual people. I was just stating that I know at least one board member has gotten a phone call regarding the project that is yet to be, and it's just a note to the public that the project is, there is no project yet, and there will be, if there is a proposal, it'll be going through, it'll have to go through the planning board, so that'll be the opportunity and time for people to give and voice their opinions and get their input in there. And then also just a heads up to the board, just to, that there's been at least one phone call, and it's been in the Gazette, et cetera, et cetera. So that's all.
You guys have an idea of a location you're looking at?
Yes, it would be on the property that leads out towards the west Hatfield well.
Okay.
It was on that access road that leads out there on the left-hand side of that property.
And there's nothing around it?
There is not.
Uh huh, cool.
Yeah, and just, yeah, there, I lost my train of thought, never mind.
For anybody that is on, we will be sending out...
We will be sending out a mailer, hopefully by the end of this week, to the residents of West Street, and we are going to actually hold a public forum at the fire station on August 25. And we will present what the project may entail on that particular night, and then there'll be the ability for question and answers from anybody that's up there. And I did have one resident come and speak to me, and I'll be hon, she was very honest with me that after I had my discussion with her, what she was told is completely different than what we are actually proposing as a facility up there. So I, and they're, they're not the only person, I've heard it now about half a dozen times, that there, people are thinking this concrete building and very industrial-looking, and that's actually not what the plan will be. So the, August 25 at 6 o'clock at the fire station, we will have a little meet and greet and talking about the project for the future. We don't have any actual plans written up or drawn up yet. We are still at the, the very, very early stages of this entire project.
Yeah, and when I said I lost my train of thought, what I was saying is, yeah, it might be helpful to talk to some, like, talk to the planning board informally, too, but, you know, to talk about what could and couldn't potentially happen on that parcel. I know that it doesn't have any frontage, which concerns me as to something that I don't know if...
As being that it's not a, it's not a true conforming building lot, because it is not being occupied, it is a training building on town-owned property, so...
Yeah, that's something we would have to, yeah, just things that we would have to consider and probably, you know...
Again, we are, we are way, way at the beginning of this, this entire project.
And as often is the case, misinformation leads the way.
So far, a little bit of it has been...
Seeping out?
Getting out, and it's not exactly what we are intending to put there, so...
Bob, so it is town-owned property?
It is town-owned property already, correct.
Okay, all right, that's huge.
Yes. Town-owned, there is a legal right-of-way to get out there, I have the copy of the deed, and I know there's a question about restrictions on what the, the right-of-way entailed, and in fact, the deed that's registered with Hampshire County does not give any restriction, it just says vehicle, vehicle or foot traffic, but that's all it actually says in the deed, so...
Yep.
So we hope to, hope to answer a lot of those questions on August 25, and hopefully that will, you know, get people talking about it, and we, then we can start the process kinda after that. Ideally, I don't even think this project will start potentially for two to three years in all reality, but, and it will be funded through the Firefighters Association, not the Fire Department. I know that's another thing that's been out there. They think it's tax money and town funds, and it will all come from donations that the Firefighters Association garner, and then it will be donated to the town, so the town gets a very nice building, hopefully, at no actual building cost.
Yep, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. More information than we thought we would get, it was just mostly a statement around it's coming. Thanks. All right. Moving back to our previous agenda item, discussion with Jeremy Cotton on a potential special permit amendment to wood processing business at 12 Elm Street. Could you just introduce yourself for the record?
Sure, thanks. Peter Lane, I'm from Fierce Bloomberg, Omen, North Hampton, counsel for Jeremy Cotton and Lashco Tree Service. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. We did hope to have an informal discussion about the 2016 special permit Mr. Cotton currently has for cutting firewood at the industrial lot that he rents on 12 Elm Street. And what he's looking to do is expand the hours of, the hours that he's cutting wood and add to firewood, actually milling lumber. I've sent correspondence on this, I've received the response of Hatfield's counsel. I understand we are of a difference of opinion as to whether or not Hatfield's right-to-farm declaration takes away any need to seek a special permit, but reserving all rights under state agriculture law and the right-to-farm declaration of Hatfield, we did wanna just try and go through the zoning process with you all to see if maybe we can achieve Mr. Cotton's goals through this process and, and request an amendment to the special permit, which we're not doing right now this evening, but just we're hoping to, to talk and see, see if we can get that set up for a public hearing. I understand that there are complaints, or a particular complainer regarding noise coming from machinery at 12 Elm Street. And in fact, at one point, the zoning enforcement officer had issued a cease and desist order, which I'm, I believe that's been removed?
Yes.
Okay.
Not that we've heard.
Yeah, he, yeah, he...
It has?
It has, until, you know, we talk more about this, knowing that they're going forward and talking with us, it was, it was removed, in an effort of good faith.
I believe Mr. Scott made a follow-up visit and was able to actually hear the machinery himself, and I, I won't speak for what he found, but we did discuss it, and it did seem like he was willing to remove that cease and desist order. I imagine what he would have found is that the machinery really isn't as loud as some might suggest it is. In fact, Mr. Cotton has had a sound mitigation expert take a study of this. We'd be happy to bring the expert and submit a formal report when we do set up a formal hearing. But I think what we'd be able to show is that really these noise levels are totally acceptable levels, well within at least state guidelines for industrial noise.
Yeah, we have our own industrial decibel, decibels in our zoning bylaws, too. I'm not sure if those match the state ones or not.
I'll put it all together when we're back for a formal hearing, for sure. But confident that what we'll be able to show is that we're within all, all relevant and applicable guidelines. And so if that's the main concern here, then I'm, I'm hoping that apparently it's not the main concern.
It is not the only concern here. There is a concern that the wood that you're processing is not farmed, so therefore is not farmed by you. You're harvesting it, but it's not farmed by you. You're taking wood off of all these people's lots that you're doing the work for, which is fine, and turning it into firewood is fine, but turning it into lumber is not fine, 'cause that's not part of your permit. And on top of that, you've already done it without asking permission, without seeking our approval. You've already run that machine and sawn lumber there, I've seen it. So is, so is the building inspector. So we're not, we're not only concerned about noise, we're concerned about the, the likelihood of a sawmill in that, 'cause as soon as we say you can saw lumber, you're gonna bring a bigger piece of machinery in to make lumber out of it, because that's not efficient. I've had it done on my own property. Then no, that's not efficient for sawing large amounts of lumber. Okay? So those are some of our concerns, not just the noise, not just the noise. There are people that live around this that don't wanna live around the sawmill. And, and your original permit is for firewood, not for lumber.
If I may, I was the chair of the planning board when we issued this special permit. I, I think I'm the only member on the committee, on the board right now who was present when we did that special permit. And I have to say, it hasn't just been one complainer. There may be one person who complained more than others, but it has been more than a few.
And I would say, Kyle, I confirm this with Kyle, out of all the parcels holding special permits, you know, that come through us, it is one of the, the parcels with one of the largest complaints with an escalation in the last seven to eight months. So that's something that we're also taking into consideration, too, with this request.
And so, since we are in an informal conversation, and I know that you haven't actually submitted a, a special permit, your client does have a, in my mind, anyway, a fairly steep hill to climb, because if you read the minutes and the original submission for the special permit that was issued back in 2016, we issued that permit based on what we were told by the client, and we were, you know, we have to believe that what he was telling us was indeed the case. But I would dare say that perhaps he either underestimated the volume of work that he would do there, or the volume of the sound of that work, because at that time, it was presented to us that on an average year, we would split approximately 100 cords of wood a year, and that that would average out to about 50 hours of the wood, use of the wood machine. So that's roughly an hour a week. I dare say that it runs an hour a week, when I'm getting phone calls on Memorial Day while I'm on vacation, from someone saying that it's already on, operating and operating for a while. So we need to have accurate, credible data provided to us for us to make what really, we thought we were making an informed decision back in 2016, but it was not an informed decision, because it was based on information that really was not accurate to the, to, to what the situation ultimately was. In fact, it goes on to say that there, the equipment that would be used would be barely audible, is the phrase that was used in the hearing at the time. Now, you can do all the tests you want, but it's hard to believe beyond any credulity that the equipment that's used is barely audible, especially the milling equipment, which was not allowed to be used at all, and has been used, and so we already have some examples of what that sounds like. Now, you are in an industrial zone, but you have to recognize that that is a, somewhat of a historical anachronism, if you will, because it was an industrial location at a time when Hatfield was an active farming, commercial, industrial community with very little residents, and the residents who lived there were associated with the buildings and the businesses associated with the properties adjacent to them. That is not the case anymore, especially on Elm Street. The plant, master plan committee, which I was on in the late '90s and in the 2002 master plan, memorialized some of those, what some people could call spot zoning or in, in, in fills, if you will, to represent what is there, what was there. And so this became an industrial zone, but it's completely surrounded by residential uses. And it, it needs to reflect the fact that it is surrounded by residential uses, and until this business came into being, at least in the modern age, the most recent age, since that master planning process, none of the other industries such as they are, are nearly as impactful as this one has been on the neighborhood. And I will say that the, the submission in 2016 ended with Lashco Tree Services committed, committed to bettering the community we live in and go to great lengths to make this happen. And I think it's fair to say that the interaction of, of the owner of this business, some of the people who have been concerned about noise levels, but more importantly, working outside of the approved hours, I dare say they would, they would agree with that last statement.
And I'd just like to add one thing. From what Bob just, you did not have a permit to run a sawmill there. You never had a permit to run a sawmill there. So is it okay to do it, then apologize instead of asking permission, or getting, getting the, the right to do it? Is it okay to say, "Oh, jeez, we didn't know, we're sorry." And we're sorry that it screams so loud when the sawmill is actually sawing wood, and I don't care what you say, if you live 100 feet away, you're gonna hear that screaming. I've had a house full of lumber sawed on a mobile dimension sawmill before. I know how loud it is. But you don't, you didn't ever have a permit to do this, and you did it anyways. So you come to us with a little bad taste in our mouth, because you've already violated our, your original permit. So understand that maybe we're not that amenable to bend things because you don't have a very solid track record yet. And it's really reflected in the fact that what you guys told the permitting agency, us, I wasn't here, but Bob was, that you were only gonna do so much, and whether that, whether your building, your business grew exponentially and you didn't know it was gonna be, you should've come a long time ago and saying, "Listen, we're way, doing way more than we ever thought we did. We need a better, we need a different permit for this, 'cause we are way outgrowing what we said we were gonna be." But you didn't, you just milked the situation.
Yeah, thank you, Bob and Jimmy.
And I've heard from, excuse me, one more thing. I'm not saying this from me only, I've heard from neighbors around where your business is that are just not happy with the fact that you're doing things that you didn't have a permit for.
Yeah, and, you know, to, that's the point of coming back to suggest an amendment to the permit, because business, you know, sounds great, you're doing great with business then, if it's going, if you're have, working a lot more, wanting to increase hours and that kind of thing. And so that's what the point of coming to amend the permit is, like we did with Black Birch.
Right.
Black Birch Vineyard went through a recent thing where they came back and asked for extended hours and things, too, when their business was getting, you know, bigger. So that's like the point of this, and, and looking at what our attorney was saying about the fact that, given where this, where you're operating now, is, would, he is arguing that it wouldn't necessarily be, you know, considered an agricultural business. I mean, there's an argument to be made that where you're leasing that, the woodlands up in west Hatfield, that would be considered more of the farm, probably, if you were decided to do that milling operation and stuff there, that would probably be right-to-farm and use the ag exemptions on those particular parcels, but I, based on what the attorney Mullen said, that current parcel that you're operating out of, I don't think would, would qual, based on what he's saying, he's, he's, I know there's the...
There's nothing growing there.
That there, it's not, yeah, that it wouldn't be considered in that particular parcel. So there's, just going on what our attorney said, you know, we have to take all that into account, 'cause we obviously would be going by our counsel, and you, you have a different, slightly different opinion on that, so...
And I'm curious, on the property, 'cause I know when you, and again, when you describe what you were doing before, it was that you get trees from, you know, landscaping operations, or as you point out, a tree crushing a house, so, you know, you're bringing in trees that, you know, people haven't cut down, whether it's Mount Holyoke College, or, you know, one of my neighbors who decides to take three or four trees down, you bring them in here, you chip them, you split them into firewood to then sell as cordwood. The properties that you've leased to qualify as a farmer, have you, have you started harvesting any of the trees off of that?
We have.
You have, have you been to the Conservation Commission to get a approval for a harvesting operation?
Well, my, my father's land, there's a certain amount of area that he's cutting for a view, so we're harvesting that land, replanting the trees.
Wait a second, he's cutting trees down so he can have a view?
And replanting, replanting trees for him.
Okay, so I, I actually live across the street from a tree farmer. He doesn't cut trees down to create a view. I mean, it's, it's, farming is a little, I mean, being in, being a horticulturist or being an arborist, or, you know, is a little different than just cutting some trees down off of someone's property so they get a better view.
Well, that's just, you know, one scenario, but everything that we do, we have to recycle.
No, I understand that, but it's, but again, it's up to you and our attorney to argue. I'm not an attorney, but I've spent a lot of time working on the ag exemption in the state of Massachusetts in my professional life, and it did not appear to me that this would qualify as a farm under, make sure I have it. have it right, is it chapter 40A? Chapter 40A, yeah. And the definition of agriculture under chapter 128, section 1A. So anyway, though, that's not for debate tonight.
And I, I, I don't want to debate with you.
Yeah.
We're, we're here to go through-
Right.
-the zoning process for the town of Hatfield.
But I think, at least from me anyway, and then to, uh, to, and, and I don't want to speak for Jimmy, but for me, I think you've heard what we're expecting to hear. And as Steph said, if the business has done as well as it has, that they're actually doing more than 50 hours a year and 100 cords a year, that's great, but this may have outgrown this space.
I hear you.
Or this permit.
Yeah, well, it definitely is outgrown.
Outgrown the permit for sure.
But has it, it might have outgrown this space.
Okay.
And one, one thing that I'd like to address as far as Memorial Day, I take full responsibility for that on Memorial Day. I, I have, we have two years' worth of COVID behind us. The economy is not doing well and I have several employees that are barely making ends meet. So when they ask if they can work on a holiday, I said, sure, you can go in, you can clean trucks, you can clean up the shop. And that's what I was expecting them to do. I wasn't working on Memorial Day. They asked if they could come in and put in some hours to pay. So that's what I did. Unbeknownst to me, until I heard the complaint and Kyle Scott called me, I went, you gotta be kidding me. And I was just as pissed as the surrounding neighbors that a machine was started up and it made noise. I was upset, you know, as anybody would be. That is completely, that complaint has complete veracity to it and there's no argument. As far as using a different, a different tool, I did not think that I would be upsetting anybody. It's not, both machines aren't running at the same time. One thing that Mr., or Esquire Lane didn't inform you is that we supply firewood to a lot of pizza makers. We supply firewood to a lot of pizza places in Northampton and they prefer, because they have limited space, to have dimensionalized firewood where the sawmill that I'm using is literally cutting out lumber, which we then cut into 16 inch blocks, which is now cubed. So one, one cord of wood is 128 cubic feet and that's stacked. But I can get a one cord of wood on a single pallet if it's cut into square blocks. And so, you know, we're cutting firewood just with a different machine. It doesn't matter if it would be sawing it by hand, splitting it by hand, using a wood splitter. It's just a different tool to get the same result. So I can palletize firewood to give to these people because they have no room to dump a loose cord of wood in a parking lot in the middle of Northampton. They need a pallet.
Well, I, I could, I personally can appreciate that and understand that, you know, your business model is changing. We just have to recognize that what was presented and how, and, and why the special permit was issued in the, previously, and, you know, I'm seeing that we had a number of people present at that meeting that were concerned about the business. And again, some of the, and I think a large part of the reason that the board approved the special permit was the argument that it would be, you know, 50 hours average a year, 100 cords of wood a year, and it be quiet and barely audible. So if new equipment had to come in-
We, we have not changed those hours or the amount of firewood that we have done.
Really? You only run about an hour a week?
It's not an hour a week. It would be, it would be 40 hours in one week, right? Or breaking, it's not an hour a week. We'll do a day here if we have a, a short day of tree work. So we'll run for eight hours. It's, it's broken apart.
Right, but, but still, your average, you, you had, you had said, and again, this is just bringing new data to us when we consider the new special permit. At the time, it was averaging out to 50 hours of use a year.
It's, it's basically two cords an hour for 50 hours. And that is basically what generates our 100 cords of, of wood.
Right, but if you said that one week you worked 40 hours, that means that you're only working maybe a half a day or a day for the rest of the year because then you're already up to 50 hours a year.
The machine sits.
Yeah, right, but-
The, the, the noise that, the noise that you're hearing obviously upsets somebody that's, it's on a holiday, right? And I take full responsibility for it, I get it.
It wasn't just on that particular holiday. It's just, it's hard to imagine-
Sorry, there's some feedback from someone running virtually. Can you mute yourself if you hear virtually? I think it's mic. I bet it is.
Yeah. It's, it's hard, it's hard to imagine that it, that the amount of hours that that machine is running on a yearly basis, given-
Can you mute yourself, please?
That it's only 50 hours.
I'm sorry.
I mean, you just said that one week you may work for 40 hours, the machine may run 40 hours. That means it's only running 10 hours for the other-
The firewood-
51 weeks.
51 weeks.
And then it sits. 99% of our business is off campus.
Okay, so, so you deliver firewood on a regular basis to these restaurants in Northampton and around for, for pizza?
On, on like a monthly schedule.
Okay, so then if you do 40 hours in one week, how are you going to supply those other 51 weeks with only 10 hours of, of work? How are you going to supply all that wood?
I guess you're not understanding me. All the firewood gets cut and split and then it gets stored.
Seasoned.
And then it's stored, right? So it's done.
Okay.
But so the, the noise that you're hearing, right? The noise that you're hearing is maybe an, an hour during the day we had to, you know, clean up the yard or do something, like, just like the guys were doing on Memorial Day, which was totally inappropriate. And I agree with the board. It was, it was inappropriate. It was uncalled for and I apologize to the residents that were affected. I would have been upset too. I was upset. That's not what they were instructed to do and they did it on their own volition. There's nothing else I can, I can say. You know, as far as the words where I want to make the community a better place, just this morning, I learned that one of the residents close to Benson's has not had hot water in her house for three months. This morning, 200 gallons worth of diesel fuel went in her tank on Lashco Tree Service. 200 yards of chips donated to the school in Hatfield for the children's playground at no cost. Firewood delivered to people in need. Barn boards cut for barns, tobacco barns, because they're rotting for farmers that, that need barn boards for their, for their barns. You know, there is not a day that goes by that I am not out to help anybody that needs help in Hatfield specifically, you know, around our area. Was there a veracity to the complaint on Memorial Day? 100%, 100%.
Just so you know, that wasn't the only complaint that we've gotten over the years. So just-
But it's really the only complaint that has really been kind of like pushed my way where I, where something has been brought to my attention.
Oh, no, I, I know that the other ones have been brought to your attention because we've had Kyle go and talk to you from time to time. And so, look, you asked us what you need to do for this special permit. I think you know what it is.
Right.
I see. I just want to clarify and Jeremy can correct me if I'm wrong, but what, what's being sought is really the ability to run the machines for a day each week on a Saturday. That's, that is the day where he has the time to actually do the, the wood cutting. And so that's what we're seeking. I know in the original permit, it was allowed on more than one day, but unlimited hours. But as it practically turns out, Saturday is the day that, that, that his business can, uh, that he can have the time to run the machines. And so as I indicated in our letter, what he's seeking is an expansion of hours on Saturday to run the machines. But it sounds like you want to understand, and I just want to recap and make sure, just an accurate assessment of the volume of wood. I would like to-
Translates into an hours.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right.
And I would like to also provide information, formal information on a sound study. It sounds like folks are pretty skeptical about that. I can only tell you, since we're having this informal conversation, on, on a visit there one day late spring, um, you know, we ran a machine. I stood on the other side of, stood in various areas and I can tell you, it's minimally audible.
Which machine?
The, the Woodmizer.
Yeah, I would like, the sound expert, I think, is, is important, not with it, with it running and then also when there's wood going in it.
Sure.
Because I think that is when it might exceed some of those, those numbers, right? And then, and then also using it within what we have in our zoning bylaws as well. How to measure that is all listed in our zoning bylaws as well, so.
And I, I invited Kyle over to our shop and ran the machine at full board for him, walked to the corners of the properties and you could hear birds chirping.
Well, again, it might be useful for us to have a-
I'd love to have you on.
I was going to say, have a field site visit. We'd have to post it if there's more than-
Yep.
-three of us. But we have done site visits in the past where just two of us went so that we wouldn't have to actually post it as public hearing because there's no decisions made. It's just there to, to collect facts.
Sure. And again, I really want to stress, we are not here to fight with the town of Hatfield. I'm certainly here to help my client achieve his business goals, but more importantly, this evening, we're here for a conversation and we hope to be able to keep that going. And we understand, some of you feel that you did not get full information before. All I can tell you is I'm here and my goal is to make sure that there is full information and that we can kind of maintain this, this dialogue to see if we can achieve everybody's needs. So we will submit a formal application, we'll have information together, I suppose. Is it possible that we can do this and be at a, at a public hearing in September?
Yeah, because I feel like you're pretty close to getting it, from my understanding.
Yeah, I just, I didn't understand the-
The time, yeah.
-publication deadline, but that's fine if we can do that.
I would imagine that this could get on for September, yeah.
Okay, and that'd be-
If I may, can I, can I just say that when this comes forward, can I just get some kind of proof that you're actually cutting dimensional lumber to burn? Because I mean, when I first heard it, it, it seemed, I was really skeptical, to be honest with you.
Sure.
But hearing your, hearing your explanation, it's, it's more feasible to me. So I would just like in, to, to wrap my head around that a little bit better.
Of course.
Sure.
Yeah, and then also, you know, Kyle, when Kyle Scott went to go look at when the complaint came through, he sent a photo of the machine and there was like live edge wood, like that becomes tabletops or coffee tables and stuff there too, so like-
There was some there, absolutely.
So, and that's why you're seeking to add the lumber milling piece to the permit as well, so there's-
Sure, I, I mean, I can't sit here with a straight face and tell you that the only reason I bought that machine was for firewood.
Right, like the tobacco barn boards.
But, but what I can tell you is that 90% of the wood that I have cut with that machine has been for dimensionalized firewood. That's why I bought it.
I wonder if it's possible to do the site visit with at least two members prior to-
Prior to a third?
Yeah.
I'm game.
I think that'd be great if you're open.
Yeah, if there were two that would want to go or-
I'll go.
Yeah, whenever.
If you have a deci, do you have a access to a decibel reader or?
Kyle might.
We, we do, I can have the sound engineer that-
Yeah.
That I use. I can use his, it's probably more sensitive than the one that you have because it's an electrical engineer.
Professional, yeah.
But I can have him there and you can see it for yourself, you can hear the birds chirp.
Yeah, I'm sure there's an app for that.
There is, there is, yes.
Personal experience lends itself to that. My being there, you know.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, but it's, I've seen people at concerts pull out their phones and it shows what the decibels are.
And, you know, one thing I also want to bring up, you, you mentioned earlier before we stepped up, that sometimes there's misinformation on both sides. And so having a site visit, I think, would be beneficial to everybody involved. So you can walk it, walk it, you can see it, you can hear it for yourselves and go from there. Where, where, I can tell you, after two years of COVID and the way that our economy is right now, there, there is no growth in any company. I can barely find help to work and, you know, being in a, a small business in this economy right now is not, I can tell you it's not easy. I'm working 80 hours a week to stay afloat and trying to find help is almost next to impossible. And I can tell you, I'm not the only one that says that. It's all over the place. And we're just looking for a place to work, a place to, we, we have to work out of somewhere. And I thought that I was doing the right thing by finding a zoned piece of industrial property where it's the best piece, you know, not trying to do my wood processing in somebody's backyard that I'm throwing them, you know, a couple hundred dollars, you know, a month for rent and, and, you know, popping up this, you know, land, uh, tree company in a residential neighborhood in the backyard hoping that nobody complains.
Right, I appreciate you, yeah, doing that the right way, correct, in finding the industrial-
And we've tried to do it right from the beginning. We're here because of the complaints. I can tell you that, again, I was mortified regarding the Memorial Day. You know, I, I spent 25 years serving the Commonwealth. I understand very clearly what Memorial Day means and that I wasn't working, trying to do the right thing for my guys, to give them, you know, extra money in their paycheck and all of a sudden they go out and do their own thing. I was extremely frustrated. And so if there's other noise complaints, I want to data mine what the noise complaints are, find out why they're happening and then figure out a way to mitigate them. That's the best I can do.
I think it's important to know that probably most, if not all, of the neighbors there all lived there long before you came in as a business.
Of course.
So, and it is, it is an industrial zone, but it is a residential neighborhood. So we need to keep that in mind as well.
There's a balance.
Yeah, there is. And we, again, we, we approved the special permit based on the data that was given us, which seemed as if that would achieve that balance, but it clearly hasn't. So we need to make sure that that, something like happens going forward, that that balance can be achieved.
Sure, and I'm all for that.
All right.
Anything else, yeah?
So the September hearing would be on the 7th or?
First Wednesday of the month at 6 o'clock.
September 7th.
This is 7.
At 6 o'clock, yeah.
And so that I'm perfectly clear, the publication deadline would be Monday, August 22nd? So that by August 24th, there is publication?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, and you need to be careful because the, you know, if you get into the Hampshire Gazette on the 21st, they may say, we're already full for the 22nd, so.
All right.
Or whatever, yeah, however that works.
Because they only have a certain amount of print column for legal ads.
All right, great, thank you.
And then we'll be-
And then in terms of scheduling, yeah, would you want to do that in the evening or?
Yeah, Jimmy and Lee, do you guys want, do you want to do that?
Yeah, I, I make my own schedule, so whatever.
Me too.
All right.
They can go there in the day too, or whatever, yep.
Okay. So why don't we, should I just email with Gerard or with you?
Yeah, Gerard will get, um, three of you.
Gerard couldn't get in touch with us.
And introduce.
All right, so we'll make a couple of suggested days and shoot you an email with that.
Cool.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks very much for hearing us.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to-
Well, do, is there anybody else that wants to talk about this subject?
Well, this was just an informal conversation, so I think-
That would be, their opportunity to speak would be at the next special hearing.
Okay.
So neighbors can't say anything?
Not during, well, if you, I think it's too, it's an informal conversation.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an informal discussion, so it'll-
Can I just make a comment on the, on the study, the decibel study? Just taking into effect, taking into account the echo effect? And if something could be done like within our backyard to, it seems to get magnified back there on Three Prospect Street?
So you, when you guys go and have the field hearing-
Yeah.
-or the field meeting-
Yeah.
-field visit, you could arrange to go out like, like-
At the corner of your property.
Like, or their house and Betsy's and Russell's and-
And yeah, and I'd advise for you both to review the piece in the zoning bylaws where it shows you like you have to go, where to go. You go to the major property lines and you have-
It wouldn't hurt to go to the end of Porter Ave too. I mean, they're sitting, they're sitting right on it.
That's the end of the property line too, I think, right? Like right up there, yep.
Yeah, I wouldn't just do it, yeah.
Good.
Great.
Excellent.
Yeah, and then-
I just don't, you know, not just all by the machine and right there.
Right.
Yeah.
And then also, yeah, go, um, the process next time will be proponents and opponents can come and speak about the application.
Yeah, it sounds like it's going to, when we go over, it'll be, it'll be out there so anybody can go, right?
Right.
Is that, is that my understanding?
Well, it doesn't, if, if, it doesn't have-
More than two of us, it has to be published as an open meeting.
I see. I see.
It's only two, it doesn't.
No, I mean like other concerned people.
Well, it doesn't have to be noticed or posted, so it'd just be word of mouth, but you also don't want to get into a situation where people are arguing with each other out there, so.
That's the point of this public hearing and the forum, a little more control.
Right.
So our job is the research.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, but for, yeah.
That was awesome, thank you.
Did all of you come for that reason?
I did.
No.
Okay.
Me too.
No.
I just come because I like to know what's going on.
Great.
All right. Moving along then, we good to the next, okay, so only a couple other little things in the.
The only thing I would say is important, we, and I've only, actually, in all of my years on the planning board, I've only had one field meeting or field visit. And it was just myself and Paul Labby. We went to collect facts and look at the property and have, you, it's, it's the facts and nothing but the facts.
Right. I keep our opinions out of it.
Yeah, your, your opinions are out, you can't have like discussion or any kind of conversation like that, or anything that might appear as the two of you coming to some meeting of the minds.
Including.
Yeah, it's just.
Well, meeting of minds would be stretched.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Bob. So, and we have on here a discussion about virtual meetings moving forward. So there's still, the State House passed a law to extend the virtual option for municipalities, and it's kind of our decision whether we would want to keep the virtual option available for folks. I think out of, I know the Select Board has chosen not to do, not to continue with that. But I think for accessibility sake, and we're in the 21st century, and we had someone call in from Oregon, for example, I think it makes us a more accessible government and.
Especially because we, we also have a member that's not always able to make it.
Yeah.
And we are allowed to continue to participate. That was the.
For another year, I believe, Gerard?
Okay.
Yeah.
Next May.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, I think more transparency and accessibility for folks, maybe working parents who can't, or, you know, parents in general who can't leave their kids, or someone who might have difficulty getting to the town hall, you know, I think it makes sense and is kind of a no-brainer, despite some of our technical difficulties in the past. So I don't know what anyone, everyone else thinks, but.
Keep it.
I would agree.
Well, I think I could argue the point both ways, but I don't think my opinion's strong enough to, to go against the flow, to be honest.
Do you need a motion to do this?
Yeah, I don't know, Gerard, is it just like?
It's an informal discussion.
Okay.
Okay, cool. And then Bob, I know you want to just talk, mention something during this.
Yeah, so I wanted to just officially let everyone know, and on the board, Steph knows, Gerard, I think, knows, that Janet and I are about to put our house on the market in Hatfield. And so we will shortly, if all goes well, no longer be Hatfield residents. But there's obviously a fair amount of time between when a house goes on the market, you get an offer, and then there's a closing.
Right.
But I want to be sure that people know that I, I don't want to operate on the planning board with one foot out the door. So my, the September meeting will be my final meeting.
Okay.
And that would provide time. My, my term on the, on the board would have ended in May, so I would have had to have run again if I want, if I were to stay on anyway. I apologize that it's eight months out perhaps, or more from that time for all of you, but the timing and everything was just right for us. And so.
Congratulations.
Something I said?
Yeah, right, right. And so anyway, my, I will submit my resignation effective September 8th.
Okay.
And so that means that we would, as a board, be appointing someone to replace Bob, so anyone.
Do we appoint it, or does the moderator?
No, it's the Select Board.
The Select Board, but, okay, yeah.
Yeah, so the Select Board will get a letter, they then issue a job announcement, if you will. And that person submits their information to you all.
Right, okay, I was wondering if we had an input in this.
And then you make recommend, the board makes recommendations to the Select Board.
Okay.
And then there's a joint meeting between the Select Board and a quorum of the planning board, so at least three people would need to attend. And a decision is made at that point as to who that temporary fill-in person is. And they fill in for the remainder of the seat. So in this case, it would just be till May, and then if they wish to continue, they would have to actually pull papers and run on their own.
So this is a call out to the public, if you're thinking about getting your, dipping your toes into the planning board waters.
First contender, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so, or anyone that you think might be good, a good person, you know, someone maybe some planning experience or anything like that would be, would be great. Yeah, and like, it's just, it's just till May, so it's, you know, a short commitment if they're hesitant. But trust me, once you're in here, you'll want to stay. You have to for five years after that. Terms are five years.
If you win.
But Bob, I will say, it'll be, it's a big loss to the community to have, you've served so many different boards and have such great knowledge.
Really? I don't know what we can do without you.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
In the town.
I know it's not your last meeting yet, but I'm going to start to.
Well, I'm only a phone call away, I'm more than happy, or you.
Be careful, be careful with that.
No, I'm more than happy to continue to pass along at least institutional knowledge based on what was done in the past or whatever, so, thank you. It's been great working with all of you, and it's been terrific, 12, I think, 12 years, so.
That's awesome.
In light of, I mean, talking about people serving on the board, like, we're also, I'm working with Marlene to put together a job description for our part-time planner. Yay!
That's terrific.
So I, you know, sent her an email last week with just like a draft, just to get something going. It'll probably be only like a five-hour-a-week kind of thing, or like as needed. We're hoping maybe it would be great for a grad student who's might be trying to master, you know, get a master's in planning, or, you know, something like that. Or maybe a retired person, Wayne Fiden's just retired, no. You know, some, somebody who might be retiring and looking for a little extra work to help, you know, in a lot of ways, economic development to, you know, this could be a good role to help spur and spur that, and then also, you know, helping us out with some, so maybe we don't have to go use Attorney Mullen all the time.
You could, it'd be great to get that over to the University of Massachusetts Planning Department and.
Project for somebody.
Yeah.
You know, especially because we're coming around to the beginning of the school year now.
And also the Conway School of Design.
Oh, yeah, that's a great idea too, yeah. Yeah, so we, yeah, Marlene's was looking at the rates, you know, and how to figure out the rate with the amount of money we have, and making sure that's fair, and making sure we have, you know, it's competitive as well as we can be. So, yeah, that's moving along, and hopefully we can have something up, you know, in the next month or so, so, just update on that.
Right.
Any other informal board discussion updates before moving on to minutes?
I went through both of them, you want to take up one, the May one first, and then?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're looking at minutes from May 4th. I'm pretty sure I didn't see anything in this one. Did everyone get a chance to review them at least?
I read the May, I read both of them, but yeah, I didn't have anything in May 4th. I did find something in the other one, but.
Anyone like to make a motion to approve the May minutes?
Motion to approve the May minutes?
Yeah, just the three of us can approve it, because you were not on the board at that time, yeah. I'll second that.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, May 4th minutes are approved. Moving on to June 1st minutes.
Is it David or Lee? Have you?
David.
David, okay.
I've been called Lee since I was.
Oh, okay.
My parents called me Lee.
Oh, okay. Now I'm going to have trouble finding this.
There's a lot of attachments in these, these minutes, I've heard. There was, yeah, there was a sentence that was kind of confusing that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so on the last page, or not the last page, second to last page, when Ms. Neff's of Cronin Hill speaks about the third person down, it says, where was it now? About the third Chair Slidge explains that they, that the entire board read the complete letter prior to the meeting, and that the complete letter will be included in the minutes when the tear reviewed and approved when, I don't know what, when the.
Yeah, what is that word supposed to be?
Yeah, what, I'm not sure what we wanted this sentence to say, and that the complete letter will be included in the minutes.
I think that's all you need, probably.
Yeah, I think that's probably all you need, because that's what you've done, is you did, that was one of the attachments, right, Gerard? Yeah.
That was what I saw. Anything else?
No, I would make a motion to approve the minutes with that change for June 1st, 2022.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, June 1st minutes approved. Our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, September 7th at 6:00 PM. It looks like we'll probably have this special permit hearing for Jeremy Cotton and Lashco, potentially that parcel on North Street that wants to be reconfigured.
Has anybody ever come back to us about the solar things out on 5 and 10?
No, I don't think that's going forward anymore. Yeah.
And how about the guy over on Plain Road?
Nope, I don't, I don't, have you heard anything, Gerard?
Yeah, Kebert, yeah.
He went through the state, he did the proper channels to get a tree cutting permit.
Uh-huh.
So I don't know what else he's doing, but he's.
Right now, that's where he's at?
Yeah.
Okay.
He was clearing some trees.
Okay.
For something.
Because I keep getting questions about that one from my friends that live on Plain Road. What's going on over there?
Um, yeah, it looks like at least those two things will be on the agenda, so.
And those were the only outstanding things we had, right? Oh, what about the hotel?
Nothing.
Okay.
And the project at the end of Chestnut Street seems to be going forward fairly smoothly?
Yeah, it looks like it.
Slowly, but slowly.
Slowly is an understatement.
Yeah, the house is still there.
Yeah, you know, I was thinking, these guys must be on island time or something, the way they're.
What is that? I'm not familiar.
So at the end, you know, when you.
I do know where.